Any questions for us?
I do have staff. What is by the code considered the backyard on this property?
Backyard would be basically a line that runs along the back edge of the house. And from that point, back from there, away from the road.
So what do we consider the back edge of the house on this? Because I'm not quite sure. I mean, the back of the house would be, or what is...
I would say that the address is on Endicott Street. So the back of the house would be where the brook is and then a 50-foot buffer. And it is difficult to put it there.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right. Well... Is that the back of the house?
Which of... This is a property that has two houses and three outbuildings on it already.
Right. So if we're saying that's the back of the house?
No. That would be the back of the house. That's the address. That's the back of the house.
So that's the back of the house?
Yeah. That's it.
We're about halfway down from where the camper is. They're now halfway.
So they have it placed here right now?
Right in front of the cottage.
The second cottage.
On the side of the...
Oh, it looks like it's there.
Yeah, that's where we should park it.
So currently it's here. The side technically would be to the north.
It's not in the view of the...
Parked there.
Yeah, we have bushes.
Water issues. Just can't get it in there. There's trees and stuff.
Huh?
No room.
We got trees and bushes and we have to keep 60% of greenery, so trouble me.
We're totally trying to keep it nice and prettier.
Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify, that property slopes down towards the brook at the rear of the house. What I believe they're referring to is between the space and the topography sloping towards that brook. It's difficult to locate it back there.
Okay. So where was the option of where we could park it?
Since where we had it.
If there was, there isn't none. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Please, is this registered? Is this vehicle registered?
Yep.
Is it inspected?
Not right now.
Not right at the moment. Only two days.
So it's not roadworthy right now?
No, it's roadworthy. We just didn't inspect it.
We hadn't brought it out since the COVID started this year.
How many years have you owned this vehicle?
Geez, it's four. My father died three, four years.
And you traditionally kept it in the front yard?
Yeah, we moved it all around. Yeah.
Yeah. But most of the time we kept it up in the front, you know, we'd bring it in from the end of the season and we'd park it up.
We weren't aware of it or anything like that. So once we were aware of it, then we moved it.
Do you use this vehicle for housekeeping?
Oh, God, no.
No housekeeping?
No, no, no.
An extra spot to be?
Oh, no. No one might go out there once in a while if we have an argument or something.
Is it connected to the water and sewer?
No.
No, 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 no.
Can it be drained into the water and sewer?
No, not here. I bring it out. I do have that done. But we haven't used it this year at all. Having it sitting on the property due to the COVID, we didn't want to risk going out. So we keep it, you know, drained and everything until we decide to do it.
I plan on going to Florida for one last hurrah this winter, so being inspected by now. Does anybody else have any questions at the moment? There being none at the moment, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask anybody from the public which is speak for against this application. Please raise your hand and give a moment for the planning director. Or I can physically see one behind you. You can come up.
You want to see?
Y'all can have it there.
Okay.
I'll be calling y'all two back up in a minute.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
My name is Linda Piliad, and I live at 222 Roller Coaster Road in Laconia, New Hampshire. And I am on a butter to this property on Endicott Street, although we don't have an address for that particular 1.2-acre piece that's next door to the gentleman here. This is regarding the 522 Endicott Street north of Laconia. I believe that granting a variance would be contrary to public interest, probably mostly because of the fact that it is commercial on this particular stretch of highway. And we, having this 1.2-acre piece that has been just an empty lot for a very, very long time, we're looking to do a business on this particular property. And this non-conforming lot that's next door, making it more non-conforming may not necessarily be in the best interest of the variance. So it's, it would be best, since there's already two houses on it, it's only a one-acre piece with two houses on it already and three outbuildings, that maybe it's just a little bit too crowded already and too cluttered. It would, I understand they're trying really hard and they've done a great job trying to make the lot a little bit more appealing. But there must be another alternative to keeping that in the front. There are no other properties on Route 3 that I can think of that have anything in the front yard. And if you start setting a precedence, it just tends to snowball. I do believe that the property values are in this area are probably in a very interesting situation because of the COVID and everything that's going on, markets all over the place. To make this non-conforming, more non-conforming and more cluttered and keeping it more cluttered is difficult for me to see as being a good thing. I am sure that there are places that could store it and possibly moving it. There's already been a lot of soils moved on that property, soils brought in. I don't know if it was to make a place for it at one point or other campers that may have been there at one time. But I don't know if that maybe made it worse. But if there maybe could be something that could be done there, that might be a good thing also. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for me?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public which speak for or against this application? Please raise your hand. There being no one else, I do have...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I got letters for two applicants tonight, but it's applicable to both.
Okay, we do have one letter that indicates they have disapproval of the granting of the following variance. Actually, they're, well, let's just talk about this one. And they oppose to the granting, "Within a mile of my home, I passed three camper trailer parks on the driveway and the side of the home. By Main Street, Laconia is in a competitive market with guilt with Meredith for homes and sales. And I get concerned buyers would look at Laconia in a negative light. Number two, do not benefit the rest of Laconian citizens in any way. Number three, add no increase in tax pay. Number four, does not add to the visual appeal of a house, neighborhood, or city. This is of particular concern when it comes to real estate in Laconia as a place to buy a home or retire. Can negatively impact value of surrounding home when listed for sale? Approval would suggest to others it's okay to use yard as storage against the city ordinance by submitting a variance." This was by Jim St. Perry from 114 Morning Sun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So if there's no one else, yes.
I just want to point out to the board that one of the functions of Karen and other staff members that I have is to drive around the city and on occasion to observe potential zoning violations. And trailers inside and front lawn is a very, very common violation that you cite. We send out dozens of letters a year throughout the city reminding people of this ordinance. This ordinance has been in place for many, many years. And its primary function is to, as was stated in this letter yesterday, Mr. Chairman, is to try to keep Laconia looking as nice as possible. We have a lot of boats in this community in this particular time of year. In particular, they start popping up on people's yards because they're gone away for the winter. You know, they've gone out of the lake for the winter. And we have an uptick in this time of year between some of these trailers, RVs, and campers and boats. We suffer the same thing in the spring when people start taking the trailers out and they won't start using them. And I know that it's very difficult for some homeowners because they do not have a place to store them that meets the criteria of the ordinance. And in many cases, their only option is to store them offsite someplace else. It is one of the expenses that generally occur when you own an RV or a camper. You've got to register it, you've got to ensure it's maintained. And one of the things that you might have to do also is to pay somebody to store it someplace that meets the requirements of the ordinance. I know that this board is very concerned in the past about setting precedents. I think sometimes you're a little overly concerned about setting precedent. But I can assure you that in this instance, since this is the first request that I can recall for alleviation from the requirements of this ordinance, that you would potentially setting a precedent that is not good for the city overall. We have, like I said, dozens and dozens of instances every year where we are requiring people to move their trailers. Some of them can move them to other places on the property and some of them cannot. And when they cannot, they have to find another place for it. And that's been what's been happening for many years.
Okay, thank you. I would like to add to that, that since I've been on the board for almost two decades, we have had at least one, and it was on South Main Street where they requested to keep their camper. And in that instance, it was also denied. So anyway, back to the work at hand. Anybody else, there's someone else in the public which speak for or against this? I'll let the record indicate that. I'll bring it back to the board for further questions.
Uh, hang, hang on. Yep, sorry. I've got my hand up.
Okay.
He has disappeared.
Oh, there he is. Mr. Bernard, you were on mute.
He's muted, Dean.
Yep.
There we go. Still muted, Mr. Bernard.
Am I there?
Yes, you are. Close call.
Obviously, obviously, it's my first Zoom meeting. But relative to my application for variance, I have some different issues with the previous person that had a trailer issue parked. Mine is a motorhome, not a trailer.
Sir, are you an applicant tonight?
Yes.
Okay, we're not speaking of your application at the moment. Do you have something pertinent to the application we are discussing?
9:58 North Main Street.
Well, we're not discussing yours at the moment, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm sorry. My bad.
Okay, we're going to put you back on hold and we'll be to you in a few minutes, okay?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. So anybody else from the public which speaks, please raise your hand on the application.
No one else?
Okay, let the record indicate no one else which speaks for this application. Therefore, we're bringing it back to the board for further questions of the applicant. Mr. Foot, any questions?
No.
Mike, any questions?
None of the applicant, no.
Gail, any questions?
Of the applicant? No.
Roland, any questions?
No.
With that, I'm going to ask the applicant, do you have any further inputs?
Yeah, I'd like to sort of reply. I was received through email today that one, James St. Pierre sent a letter. This is the fourth time we've been here and it's been carried over. I find it weird that he sends a letter today, the third day we came. I don't know who this guy is or how he might have even come across to even comment on our particular application. Like, how would he have known about it? Would you hear?
It's public information.
Like, did he drive by and see and go, oh, look at that, that's ugly, you know, or whatever? I don't understand. He had mentioned how he was driving.
Sir, do you have a question?
There is one. My question right now is that...
We don't take the time to talk of other people talking, so...
Excuse me. I would like to just, once again, this was only temporary. And we're not making this permanent for anybody in the state or in the city. Laconians should do this on their own. We wanted to do this until we can at least get this sold or find a way to move it. I just recently had heart surgery after having a stroke a couple of years ago. My family's own this property for 30, something years. And it's not where it originally was. It's sunk in that, the whole property itself is. You can barely see it from the road. We're just trying to keep it out of the way and keep it, you know. And we are a commercial property. When I bought that, I bought it as a commercial residential property. We're not doing anything to be...
The other property, the property, there's no, there's only one house next door.
We're trying to make it look nicer for anybody who's near us that they see it in its presence. For them to drive by and see it, oh, that looks nice, and then they just go on. Not an ugly piece of property with that there. I mean, we're only trying to do this in chill. I can get it sold. It belongs to me and I would like to, you know, just be able to hold it there. I don't want, you know, I mean, we've had campers on the property for off and on during the summers for the last 30 years, you know. But nothing other than, when I first heard the picture from my brother, I've only kept it on there just for the winters. And there was never an issue. Nobody's ever brought it up for... So I'm not saying that that was in violation. Nobody's said anything, you know, in the property next to it, which...
You've got to really be looking for it in order to see it.
It's not a real eyesore unless you go by there and you're going down to look at it. I mean, we're doing everything in our power now.
You can buy that property. I have pictures here. Go look.
And it was just a month years ago. It's totally getting better. We didn't have anything other than the fact that our brothers from the service are veterans. They need to remove some earth. And we had some problems and we just brushed it throughout the area to try to alleviate the old... There was a lake field back there, which we, since the city had put in a sewer system up on that road, we have been trying to alleviate all that nastiness on the property and bring it back into a beautiful property. So we're not trying to do anything that's being negative or... So I'm trying to anyway of our neighbors. Most of my neighbors like to always kind of the property. But yeah, I'm just asking for temporary. Maybe if we can live it again next year. Hopefully COVID will be over and I'll be able to move it down to another property.
All right, anything else, sir?
No. Thank you. I really appreciate your time and your attention to this, and thank you very much.
All right. With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Steve?
Yes, bro.
I have an ad from the Laconia Sun that's been running for the last two weeks. If you all just take a look at it and pass it down.
I'm going to read this to the board.
Sure, it's been in the paper every day for a couple of weeks now.
What was being circulated, and it'll go into the record over here as you finish with it, Michael. It's in the Daily Sun. It said, "Boating campers' outdoor storage, $100 for the season in Belmont." And I won't go any further as the heat swells and whatnot. But, so go ahead, Mike.
Well, it just, it seems $100 is reasonable to store a boat for the winter. It's a, or a camper, for that matter. And I don't, I just can't agree with doing a variance on this. It's really not a hardship.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Gail.
I have one technical question before we go any further. So this is maybe for Dean or Karen. I'm reading our table of permitted uses in the city of Laconia. And under where it says residential accessory uses, it says storage of travel trailers, campers, boats. And under the commercial resort area, which is what we have here zone, it has an E for special exception. Is this even the correct application for this particular zone?
The special exception would be for business to store boats or RVs outside for personal residences, although this is in the commercial resort district. This is a residence.
Okay.
And therefore, and they don't have to store things above that.
Oh, okay, Dean, thanks. I just wanted to make sure we were actually discussing the correct application before I went further. Yeah, I'm not going to support a variance for this. I'm just not. I don't, I don't, you know, I just don't see that it meets the criteria for the variance. And the one recourse that applicants and people who are otherwise adversely affected by this is is to go to the city council and have them reconsider this particular ordinance. But until that happens, I'm not going to support a variance for this.
Okay. Roland?
My only question is, is this variance to support short-term situations? I thought the variance was to change the rule to apply to a specific situation and allow that situation, which would not otherwise be allowed, to be allowed in that zone. But not for a long, not for a short term period. Am I wrong?
No.
You're correct. You're correct.
They would be, if you granted them a variance, it would be allowed to carry on. So, does that answer your question? Michael, Mr. Foot?
All right, you know, this piece here has been, had a variety of campers on it. And some of this may have come from when there was at least three of them on it. These things can be used or not used to a variety of people, whatever family or housekeeping is, which we look at in our ordinance. But this is storage, straight-up storage on Route 3. And when you drive to Meredith Line down to the Weir's Bridge, I noticed that any other spot, the city's been doing well on getting these things moving on. But this has been here for some time, and maybe this is the time to resolve it.
Okay, folks, do we have any other further discussion?
No, sir.
I'd like to entertain a motion then.
I'll entertain a motion. We're looking here at application 02020-0087. This is 522 Endicott Street north. Tax map 142 to 522. We're looking here for relief or variance from Article 235416.
No.
Relative to the storage of trailers inclusive in the, here, in the resort commercial. So this is L, storage of recreational vehicles, travel trailers, campers, and boats. Recreational vehicles, travel trailers, campers, and boats. Shall be stored in carport, enclosed building, or rear yard area. Shall not be located within 10 feet of the lot line. No such equipment shall be used for living, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes. This year has gotten some leeway for some time. And I just want to be sure what we are reading about here. And so I'd like to deny this there. Make my motion to deny. And granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest because... And granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest because this is not what the ordinance was created for. Once you start down this road, everybody will be able to store whatever in the front yard. The variance would not create substantial justice because these are subverting the, uh, well-thought-out, uh, plan for the, uh, benefit of a single family. If the variance were granted, would the value of surrounding properties would be diminished? Because this is just, uh, uh, actually a case of too much stuff from one small area. This would be nice to see this, uh, relieved of the extra, um, weight that's on the property. But if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would be diminished or would be imagined to be diminished because it's not contributing to a good, clean view of the area. There is no unnecessary hardship, this is self-created. And that's what I have, and that's my reasoning for denying it.
Okay, we have a motion. I do believe Gail seconded the motion. Discussion of the motion. There being none, as I call your name, please vote. Uh, Mr. Foot?
Denied.
Claire?
Senator, share the property with us. Share my chair, and I'm going to, I'm going to the U T V.
Mike?
I'll deny.
Gail?
I support the motion to deny. Yes to the motion to deny.
Roland?
Yes.
Steve, yes to deny. Motion to deny passes.
Okay, I was gonna say, just for clarification, Mike Foot would have been a yes for the denial. Same thing with Mr. Delva.
Yeah.
Correct, okay, just, just for clarification.
No, that's good. All right. Okay, the next application is zero zero nine one S C one A Gables Drive Special Exception. Applicant requests a special exception for Article seven, Section two thirty-five dash seventy, subset two, to allow short-term lodging. I do believe this was the carryover from the last meet, meeting, and where we requested that additional information supporting that this has been used in a, uh, uh, short-term lodging to meet the criteria, one of the criteria, for five years, and has it, everybody had an opportunity to review it. Is the applicant here tonight?
It's online.
Okay. If you unmute yourselves, sir. Our man. Okay, good evening.
Good evening, board members. This is Thomas and Ned Van De Water. Since, uh, our last appearance, we have supplied a affidavit that was requested from, uh, Rob Witchland, the owner of Bayside Rentals, attesting to a, uh, seven-year rental period continuous for the one A Gables Drive property. And then we asked him for more information and what he was able to come up with, since they changed their whole system and lost a lot of the, uh, a lot of the, um, the data they had, uh, was the, uh, a rental calendars from two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and nineteen for the property. And, uh, also three short-term, uh, tenant registrations with South Downshores Community Board for the years of, uh, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and seventeen. And, uh, we asked him about income tax. And what he told us was that his corporation only pays in a lump sum, so there are no individual, um, records for tax payment.
The hotel tax, but they pay the hotel stack.
They pay the hotel tax for everything at once.
And we had contacted the previous owners, the governors, and I had attached an email from them saying that they purchased in two thousand and twelve and started renting in July two thousand and thirteen. And that email was in our original application for exception. Thank you.
All righty. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
I don't.
Mike, can you move your pad? There you go. Anybody have any questions of the applicant? All right. With that, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Uh, if in person, raise your hand, and if you're on the Zoom meeting, push the little raise your hand button and give a second, and we'll acknowledge you and give you an opportunity to speak. That the record indicate, no one in the public nor on the Zoom meeting was to speak for or against this application. I bring it back to the board for further questions. There being none, any closing comments from the applicant?
Oh, it's been a more, a nice learning process for us, and we thank you for all your efforts.
Yeah, we've certainly learned a lot listening to the Board, the Board of Adjustments meetings.
You're right.
Well, thank you. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Gail.
I, I believe that, um, I think it was you and I made, made a motion last time for the, at granting of the special exception, uh, provided the criteria that we requested of the applicant was provided. Um, and I believe that the applicant has provided that criteria, certainly to my satisfaction. So I'm willing to let that motion to grant the special exception stand as, as we, as we agreed to last time.
Okay. Mr. Foot, do you have any questions? Any discussion?
I, I'm asking, are we seeing what we expect here, or is this...
I think in certain situations, that's probably the best of the information they're gonna be able to provide. And I would have to say they made a good faith effort in trying to provide all the information that was available. At least, that's what I think. But I'm just one of five.
Correct.
So. Mike?
I, I, um, feel they've met everything that's needed. My only question is, they haven't owned the property five years. It was rented by somebody else for five years. Does that carry over?
Uh, it's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance says the property, it doesn't say the owner of the property. And it, the, the ordinance is specific to the property, it mentioned nothing of the owner.
Very good.
Roland?
Oh, I think we discussed it last week, and it's right in the information we asked him to read.
Okay. Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Can do it.
Okay, Mike?
I would like to make a motion that we agree and accept the application for short-term lodging, application's number Z zero two zero two zero dash zero zero nine one to the Van De Waters and Ms. Thomas. Because they, we filled all the needs to show that the property was rented previously. And it's a good thing for the city to have short-term rentals when they're good short-term rentals. And, uh, granting the variance is good for everybody.
So basically, what you're saying in that motion is it, it's authorized into the chapter that, uh, the short-term rental
Correct.
would be, uh, based on meeting the criteria of the new lease regs. The request was not increased demand from municipal services. And, uh, any special provision for uses set forth in this chapter have been repealed. And because they would have to get the permitting and stuff set forth, uh, requirements, and then kept up to date by the, uh, with the planning department. The request would not create hazards to health, safety, or general welfare of the public as being indicated. And the request is, uh, used to be one of the following criteria.
So said.
It would be like two dash one that they offer, have, and, of the common practices is specific property, infrastructure that is created if not less than five years prior to the enactment of the short-term lodging. So, is that what I gathered, Mike?
So said, so said.
Yes. So we got a second?
Second.
Okay. So Mike, the motion, uh, the discussion of the motion. There being none, Mr. Foot, how do you vote?
I vote to accept this motion.
Uh, fine.
Accept the motion.
Gail?
Yep.
Uh, Roland?
Accept motion.
And Steve, accept the motion. Passes, enjoy your short-term rental. Follow up with the planning department, finish doing your permit and stuff, and have a good night. Would like to thank the board for their, uh, for their efforts.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move into public hearings, although we're carryovers from the last meeting. The purpose of this agenda is for the board to have a presentation for the applicant and have a public hearing, the public to provide input. All right, so the next application is gonna be zero one zero one S C sixty-one Fifth Pond Road. It's a special exception, applicant is requesting from Article, special exception from Article five, Section two thirty-five dash two-six, use is permitted by special exception to allow for a communications tower of a hundred and four feet. If the applicant... Hold on a second, and we have a second application. We're probably here both at the same time, but we'll be voting on each one separately. The second one is application zero one zero two S C sixty-one Fifth Pond Road. It's a special exception requesting, uh, an exception from Article five, Section two thirty-five dash twenty-six, use is permitted by special exception. To allow for a non-residential accessory building, transitory building. Is there a particular order? Thing that we would have to listen to these, or does it matter?
Uh, I think they're very, uh, you know, obviously related to one another, you don't do one without the other. Uh, so I would vote both at the same time, I mean, all the examples, and then when we know that, I would do special exception first because they won't build the building if they don't do special exception.
Well, they're both special exceptions.
They're both special, that's why I was asking. So is it the building or the tower?
I would, uh, for... And I also would point out to the board that this will also, um, definitely have to go to a planning board first.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney Phil Bruyard here for New Tower LLC. The applicant and the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Cheney are here. And, uh, Jeff Levitan from Northeast Communications, one of the principals of New Tower, and, uh, one of the, uh, the main, um, person that would be going on the communications tower. Apparently Northeast is a tenant on the adjacent tower, uh, and they're looking to, uh, have their own. Basically, I would also like to point out one thing. Um, the application very clearly states that the tower is a hundred and forty feet tall. The, uh, the, the notice said it was a hundred and four feet. Uh, if someone was interested, they could have actually read the application. The application is exactly, it says a hundred and forty feet tall. All right, and, uh, so I just wanna point that out, uh, that that is, uh, I don't think that's a defect in the notice in any way because it's, it's a notice of a meeting, it's a notice to someone that they can come to the planning office and look at the application. Uh, and they, also they can attend here and hear me, hear me say that. Basically, these communications towers are allowed in this zone by the ordinance, but you need to get a special exception. So actually, uh, this use of a communications tower is in Table one of Article two thirty-five dash twenty-six. So obviously, um, this area is the highest point in the city. It already has a tower in the area. This tower is shorter than the existing tower and does not need to be lit because the other tower is lit and it is higher. The, uh, use is specifically authorized in the chapter. Uh, this use will not, uh, create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. This location is out in the middle of a field on a ledge outcropping, uh, in the mo, in the, uh, Cheney's fields. Um, no one will be out there. Uh, it is a access over a private right-of-way. There's no pedestrian access, there's no impact on pedestrian safety. There is, um, basically a technician visits the transmitter building once a month. This use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff. The tower is a mono-tower that is pinned, uh, it will be pinned into the ledge and will have concrete anchors, uh, supporting it straight up. So basically, um, it is not gonna affect drainage in any way, the field's gonna stay the same, the woods are gonna stay the same, there's no trees that are gonna be tried. This is a cleared field that is mowed, um, and, uh, it's not gonna, um, uh, impact any drainage. The proposed use will not create any excessive demand to municipal police, fire protection, schools, or solid waste disposal. And any provisions for the use set forth in the chapter are met. There will not be any hazards to health... There will not be any hazards to health, safety, or general welfare to the public. And also I'd like to point out that this tower is situated in such a area that in the event it were to fall down in any direction, it's not going to hit anything. Except maybe some trees that are on my client's property. And this is, proposed location is a perfect spot for this. Again, it's on a ledge outcropping and a field clearing, totally surrounded by woods. You can't, you wouldn't be able to see the base of the tower or anything anywhere from any public vantage point. This use is consistent with the spirit and intent of the chapter and the master plan. As I said, communication towers are obviously necessary. Obviously, we know that there's more and more cell phone companies where there's more and more people that need sync signals. People need high spots for these things. It's a necessary demand for modern life. A lot of things now are going wireless. It's also a sort of a thing with this COVID, the wireless thing. We're not, we're getting away from landlines and things. And these towers are important. They're necessary. And they're actually allowed in this same area of the city. And there's, in fact, the original tower that we've had is, is there now. And that's my presentation on the special exception for the communications tower. Obviously, at the base of a communications tower is a little accessory building. The one we're proposing is the same one that Northeast actually has. It belongs to them. At the other tower, it's sixteen by eighteen and we've enclosed pictures of it. And we would be proposing an exact clone at the new location. Basically speaking, just to go through the criteria again, a accessory building is allowed, non-residential building. It's a transmitter building. It's allowed by Article two thirty-five, twenty-six, table one as a special exception. It's specifically authorized by the chapter. It's an unmanned sixteen by eighteen transmitter building. It's a non-residential building, has no water, no sewer, no living arrangements at all. It just houses the transmitter, does have electricity. The building is checked monthly. There's no direct pedestrian access. It's surrounded by a fifty-foot square chain link fence to prevent access. It is in a field on a ledge outcropping. The, that will remain largely undisturbed except for the building being put on it. There is no runoff onto adjacent property or streets. The unmanned fenced-in transmitter building will not create excessive or any demand for any municipal services. The, any special provision of the use are fulfilled. That is correct. It will, this use will not cause any hazards to health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Will not be detrimental or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood because the other tower is right there. And it won't be visible to any butter or from any street or road. Not to say that if you're in the road and you look up, you'll be able to see it, just like you look up at the other tower. But the actual transmitter building that I'm talking about will be not visible to the public in any way. The proposed location is appropriate for the proposed use. This particular building is exactly similar to the non-residential accessory use building. The transmitter building sixteen by eighteen, located next to the existing communications tower in the same area. And it will be located on the ledge outcropping on land with one of the highest elevations in the city, and it's perfect for communications tower accessory transmitter building. And as properly stated by the planning director, this will need to go to the planning board for site plan approval. And if there's any questions, either of me or any technical issues that I can have Mr. Levitan address or any neighborhood questions that the Cheneys might be able to help the board with, we'd be happy to help.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
I only have one question for Attorney Bruyard, and maybe you will answer it and maybe you'll have the other guy. I'm trusting that you guys have already done the studies and that you think this is going to be a viable site for a second tower. That will cover in that area. You wouldn't be here if you hadn't done all that research, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to know if we, if we, if we approve this. If it's even got to be worth it to add coverage area in the area. And you've done that research, so that's what, you're comfortable with that?
Uh, the, yes, the applicant's very comfortable with that. In fact, they're a tenant on the existing tower and they would move over. So that's absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil, I'm just curious, the existing tower, how tall is that?
Uh, that tower is over three hundred feet.
Is that, okay. So you're only going half of that?
Half.
Very good.
Less than half, actually.
I got one for the planning department. I don't see anywhere in the application of how tall is some of these. So I don't know why, other than our advertisement rules deal where it says it's a hundred and four. And I'm not questioning but I'm just looking at these applications for us. Maybe I missed it?
Where did it say?
Oh, a hundred and forty. Thank you. I got that button down. That's one question I have. Anybody else?
No?
No, mine was one of these on access, but it was there's a needed access to it.
Yes, it's actually the old parade road right of White Mike. So there's actually a road bed there now.
So this doesn't make the other tower useless. It's still
Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, the other tower is, is the mother of all towers in La Conia and and, and it was, and it's been replaced because, you know, went down during the ice storm. So it's, it's state of the art. It's just, if you could have your own and you want your own rather than paying somebody rent, you have your own, you know?
I didn't have them.
Mr. Foot? Fine?
We're good.
Roland? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for again. Either one of these special exceptions, please come forward if you're in the public or if you're on the Zoom meeting, please push the little raise your hand button and give the director a moment to recognize you and we have someone in the audience who wishes, we have the gentleman first.
I will wait.
Okay, we'll have you both come up.
Well, good evening zoning board and welcome to all of you members. My name is Linda Gar Golden, and along with my brother Michael Lovely, own the property on twenty-nine Pickle Pond Road. Uh, just a little history, my grandparents, Leo and Lita Gardett own the property that the Cheneys are now interested in many years ago. And my grandfather grew corn out back there. There's lots of fields. It's always been agriculture. Ray Simino then brought the property and he cleared it for his home, and that's when he used the right-of-way, just to get back there. And then he built his driveway. I would like to go on record that I do oppose this project. I've lived in this area for many years. And it's special to us and it's country, the animals, and we want, we would like to stay that way. The other tower is there. It's been there for a long time. So I mean, that was started with the radio station anyways. Uh, here are some of my reasons. Like I said, it is rural. I don't want the zoning changed. I think we should leave what little bit of rural area we have left in this world. I have not seen an environmental impact statement at all. Access road is very close to the house that we have there. Concerned about the traffic. The lights affect our taxes, our resale value. Our septic system is also on that side of our home. And let's see. With the coronavirus and everything, I don't see why we are pushing this forward like that they seem to want. We would like an extension so we can have legal counsel. I have called and called and I'm trying to get in to see somebody. Okay, if this project is granted, I do have some other issues that I would like to bring to the board to address before granting that the grant is approved. That the access road should be gated. And will there be drilling and blasting? We have a very shallow well. It's only eighty-nine feet deep. And we don't want to affect our water table. And the access road, from what I understand, I guess will be used for maintenance. But I'm sure you're going to have to use it quite a bit in order to get everything back there to build this. The type of lighting, will it affect my house? I know this leased land comes right up almost to my border near of my land. So I'm concerned about that. If the tower becomes inactive, is there a time limit to when it would be dismantled and, and deactivate our access road? And like I said, our septic system is close. Who would be responsible if something, if it was damaged? We also need dates of the start and finish of when this project is going to take place in limited hours for construction. And I want to know why can't they use their driveway? It's the same thing, the field's right there. This whole, whole project to me is not necessary. We're in a country area and that's, that's why we're there. We love the country. And I just want to thank you for your time there. My brother Mike, who's the other owner, Mr. Pennsylvania, said he was not able to be here, but he did send some papers. And I'm going to have my son Jared read what he had to ask and say.
Before, may I ask you a question? The access road that you're talking about, is that a deeded access road that's on your property?
For instance, on my side of my property.
If you looked at the plan, you'd see it.
Jared, show me where your house is here, please.
Right there.
That's your house?
Yep.
Okay.
So literally this access road is like eight to ten feet tops from the basement door of that house on, next to the yellow line. And then you go about ten feet towards the wood line, the septic tank is right there. And then the leach field's out in the back.
So is that access road on your property or is there?
Our property.
So they have a deeded access to it?
That's correct. It was deeded back by my great-grandfather. So because he owned all the property around that area at one point and he put a deeded right way through there so he could access his farmland as he sold off pieces of property, because he still continued to use the farmland. You know, we have a tower, we look out the front of the house, we have a tower there already. I don't want to look out the back of the house. Have a tower there too. I don't know why there needs to be a tower three hundred yards from each other doing the same thing when there's already one there. That he just stated was a state-of-the-art tower. It just was rebuilt. And that access road hasn't been used in, I mean, longer than I've been alive. I understand it's the old parade road and it is a deeded right-of-way. I've taken everything from dirt bikes, snowmobiles, tractors, everything down there. That road is a swamp. That road is constantly wet. The guy who just pumped the septic tank last spring, got the septic truck stuck, wasn't even on the access road yet. He was still on the property. That road is always wet. They're going to have to bring equipment in, fill and everything else to get that road to sustain vehicles going out there. Which will then affect our, they say no water. Yeah, nothing's going to be hurt from the tower or building. I get that. But this access road's going to hurt the surrounding properties, the other neighbors, my corn down below us. He already has a swamp issue. They go in, build this road. The water's all going to run down to Mike's property or the twenty-nine Pickle property, which is my family's property.
Yep. Is the present tower filled to capacity?
To my knowledge, I have no knowledge of that. I couldn't tell you anything about the other tower. But they're already on it. So they got a space. I don't know if it's full. That'd be something you'd have to check with the owner of the tower.
Okay. And you had something else you wanted to read?
Well, this is from my uncle Mike Lovely, who lives in Moon, Pennsylvania. Lot of the same questions my mother had. I'm questioning the timing of the zoning board meeting. Received a letter on Monday afternoon, November ninth. Wednesday eleventh was Veterans Day holiday. It left me with only three days to study of, well, because the additional date was, the meeting was Monday. But left me only three days to study and understand what was going on. Little or no time to obtain legal counsel. Why is the city trying to jam this through? Also, forgot, this is not normal times we are all dealing with COVID nineteen. Even your undated letter, you addressed COVID nineteen. The city's timeframe was set up for normal conditions. This is far from normal. I'm throwing this out there. We, no Cheney has a history with the city and could almost think that was some perhaps type of favoritism on this issue. Requesting extension of thirty days to obtain legal counsel. I have so many questions. Once again, he had questions about what type of tower it is, which has been answered. Was this survey done on, of the property? Since it's so close to the town Meredith Line, do they have to give input? Is the tower going to interfere with TV, cell phone, or any other, anything else that we are unaware of? And then they asked how is the base of the tower going to be constructed, supported? You know, drilling, blasting? Why doesn't Cheney use his driveway? Why does he have to turn my life upside down? And then he, we understood the correction of the tower. The original paperwork we got also said a hundred and four feet and now it's a hundred and forty. So it just, it'd be a shame. We live out in the country. And to have an access road to a tower in the front of the property and now on the side and behind the property. Who's going to want to buy a property out in the country where they have two communications towers, one on the front, one on the back? I just don't understand why the, if the one on the front, I understand if it doesn't isn't capable of holding enough stuff. Well, maybe tear that one down and build a new one next to it that can support it. Because we're going to lose lawn, your horse shoe pits down there, stuff that, like I said, no one's used this road. I mean, I'm forty. Even before that, no one's accessed down this road. So we built, we spent money over the years building a lawn, a nice beautiful lawn, horse shoe pits, you know, for family events, gatherings. And they just want to, oh, our driveway's right here, but let's go tear somebody else's so we don't have the headache. I just see it's, it's kind of a, not a very neighborly thing to do. I understand it's a deeded thing, but that deeded really has been overlooked for the last sixty years because no one's ever used it. So it's my personal belief, I don't see why they have an access, they have a gate on their property that leads right to the middle of their field. But instead they want to tear up my lawn and something that's ten feet from my house and put in an access road. I just don't see them, no truck's going to get out there, four-wheel drive or not, right now and drive through as wet as it gets out there. Stuff gets stuck all the time as a kid, four-wheelers, dirt bikes. It's going to be a lot of work to get a vehicle out there. It's gonna be a lot of work to get a vehicle out there. I mean, you're obviously gonna have cranes, not sure if you're gonna, but you're gonna have some other type of construction vehicles going in and out of that road on the initial startup. So you're obviously gonna build some type of road. It's not, you're not gonna be able to get out there normally. Okay, thank you very much.
And Jared, would you be able to show me, this is the other tower here, correct?
No, the other tower's right here, this is the access road.
All right, I thought this was the tower here.
That's where they want to put theirs, or they want to put their tower here. That's their house, and that's their barn, the Cheney's.
The Cheney's, okay.
That's their house, that's their barn.
And how do the Cheney's get to their house?
They have a driveway which runs right through here to their house and goes out to the barn.
Okay, and the other tower's over here.
Yep.
All right.
And right about here on their property, because we are good friends with the Seminoles, they have a gate that leads you directly into this field, which means they would have to not access anybody else's property and not have to build anything.
I was, I thought this was the tower, okay.
Nope, that's, no, that's their house.
Thank you for explaining.
Not a problem.
Good question.
Yes, sir?
Have you ever offered to buy back the access, to buy the deed from that right of way?
I have never, but it's, it's my mother and my uncle's property, so that would be a comment on.
No one's ever gone to hear that?
Who do we buy it from? Because we already own it and pay taxes on it.
It goes right to the deed to see where it came from.
I guess it comes down to what does the trust track?
That would imagine.
You know.
Correct.
Um, we've never tried to buy it because, to be honest with you, I did not know about it until my mother told me before she passed away. So like I said, nobody really, really used it much.
I'm not sure if I'd be able to photograph. Who walked where?
Jared just explained, let me show you.
I thought the other tower was in the back hill.
I thought that was the other.
No, it's on the other side of Pickle Pond.
The other towers right there.
Complete different piece of property.
Three hundred foot tower.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And they want to build that one.
This is where the Cheney's live, that's their house. And they have a driveway that goes along here. So they could actually access it like that instead of using it right away. You see, Roland?
Yeah.
So I'm offering for an extension for a month. Give them time to. I hate to hold up.
Well, let's continue for a moment.
Okay, um.
Officer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Chair? Uh, never mind.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application?
Yes, my name is Mike Horn. I live on the corner of twenty-eight Seventy Prairie Road and Pickle Pond. My property is pretty wet all the time. And if there's, put a roadway in out there, that would flood my yard all the time. The question is, what they gonna do about the property? We pay taxes on that roadway and they do have their own driveway. So I don't understand the purpose of doing that other property around the area where they already have access to get to, where they want to put the, so it's a tower. But the thing is, I'm concerned about is with new technology, with all the vehicles and stuff and cell phones today. I cannot make a phone call out of my driveway with that tower in the backyard as it stands today. I get one radio station. My new automobile, I can't unlock them unless I go outside and go right up to the car and unlock it. In the backyard, front yard, it doesn't matter. What's a sentence I haven't caught like that? You cannot, and I'm just serious when I say this. If I get a cellphone message, ninety percent, I'm gonna have to say ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, I have to go out of the area to get it. When I bought the property, I didn't know it was all wet land. And I did not know we couldn't have service. I ended up putting a new phone in. And the roadway, my driveway, backside of the pie-shaped piece, which the driveway comes from Pickle Pond into my backyard. If you're coming in, off from Pickle Pond, taking it right into my yard, the whole upside is all wet. I have wood out there and on pallet for three years and every year it's underwater. And it doesn't matter what time of the year you go out there, you sink. And now they're talking about putting a road in there, break the side of it. What's it gonna do, my land? Flood it more? And I hear them all the time on the towers working out there. I don't see why we need another one. And I'd like to have a study done on this. That's what I got to say.
Mr. Horn, just so I'm clear, is this your home right here?
Yes.
Okay, so you come in by Pickle Pond and then this is your driveway?
That's correct. And comes back out on.
Existing right now, is there a dirt road here or?
No. There's a road that goes along up here, Pickle Pond.
I've been up here with the snowmobile, but I haven't been here for a site plan.
There is a small strip right there, that's the old road, Prairie Road, right there. And there's a gateway there. And their house is very close to that timeline over here.
Pretty gate across.
Yes. Yeah. And the question is, if they do raise the roadway up, what's it gonna do to the property next to me as well? Is it gonna flood their yard too and the cellar? I mean, and who's gonna maintain this?
Mike, can I get you to share? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's.
I'm missing something.
Mr. Horn's house is right here on Prairie Road.
That's Mr. Horn's house. Okay. And the people that spoke.
And Jared.
That was the people that spoke before. Right here. And then where's this other house that the said driveway is?
The Cheney's. This is the Cheney's house. And they have a driveway to come into the Pickle Pond road right here. Almost here, right there. That's the Cheney's driveway.
Where's the tower?
Instead of using this road, they can just build this.
And that's whom the other tower is.
There's the other tower, Mr. Horn, Linda and Jared.
All right. Thanks. Any other things, sir?
No, any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application?
Yes.
I'm Dennis. I live on Parade Road and my property really just abuts the Cheney's. And I'll be honest, I'm here because, well, here's, I won't go into that. My question is, and I hope I can get it in the air, the tower that they have right now, how big would you say?
Sir, sir, you need to address the board and then folks. And then as we roll through all these people, there'll be an opportunity for them to answer all these questions.
All right, just a simple question, where this main tower is, is a good piece of property, all open field. And my curiosity is, why can't the new tower be placed on that same piece of property? And I'm not a tower man, but it just seems rather than tie up other people's problems and I will say where their driveway is with the house. How'd you like to live in a house eight feet off of it, you've got a driveway going through? I just, that would bug me. But I can't understand why we can't put two towers on it, one piece of property. And that's, I'd like an answer, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? As the record indicates, no one from Zoom wished to speak for or against this application. And we've heard from all the folks in the president, the meeting, that wanted to speak. So I'm gonna close it to that and bring it back to the board for further questions. And of the, so please come in. We'll give you a minute to address.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Mrs. Cheney wanted the board to know that the first group of folks that spoke tonight, to her knowledge, none of them live on the property. Also, I would like the board to know that I walked that right of way with Mr. Cheney and John Rokee and we had no problem walking it and we're not building a road. We're putting a facility out in the middle of a field. And we're gonna use the right of way that's there, not building a road. Also, a lot of the issues that are brought up are site plan issues. These can be addressed at the planning board level because it has to go for site plan approval. Radio towers, communication towers are allowed in that zone by special exception. We believe that we've met the special exception criteria. They just said that their great grandfather granted the Cheney's predecessor entitle a right of way. We just want to use the right of way. If we can't use the right of way, we're gonna find that out at the planning board level. But that doesn't change that it's a communications tower and then it's a transmitter building next to the communications tower. And this is property that, where we want to develop another tower, we can't put another tower where the other tower is because it's owned by the other tower company. So you don't, can't put another tower on somebody else's property. Basically, you know, this is like the classic not in my backyard type of thing, seeing that these are both the Butters. But these things are allowed, it's half the size of the other one. There's no lights. I, apparently they did not hear me when I said that, there's no lights on this tower. The other tower is three hundred feet high and it's got lights, this has no lights. And there's not gonna be, this is such a minimal use of the right of way. They go out to this transmitter building once a month, the engineer goes out there. It has no purpose, its only existence is to support the tower. So I really believe that what the board has to focus on is the fact that towers are allowed in this zone, do we meet the criteria for a special exception? And do we meet the criteria for an accessory building? You know, if somebody wants to lawyer up, this is, they should have done it before now. There's no reason for any delay. And they didn't, they didn't give you any grounds for anything as to why you should delay it. They just don't want it because it's in their backyard and they don't even live there. So basically, we would just like the board to deliberate and make whatever decision you feel is right or just based on the social, special exception criteria. But this is really, can all these issues about all these things they have are all planning board, site plan issues? They don't have anything to do with the special exception that's before you. Thank you.
Mike, do you have a question?
I do have a question. How much blasting would you have to do to put this tower into a solid rock lead?
Zero, it's drilled.
Thank you.
It's drilled and pinned and cemented with bolts and hydraulic cement, it's, there's no blasting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at the, no, sorry. Any other questions of the applicant? There being none, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Um, Mr. Chair? Uh, Mr. Chair? Hello? I, I do want to ask Dean a question and it goes directly to the heart of what Attorney Brouillard was saying. I don't believe we're here to discuss the easement or the road that accesses this. What's before us now, that's a planning board issue and that's gonna be taken care of in site plan. If they say, if the planning board determines that this is an unacceptable access road, then they're gonna have to find another way or not build it. I think we ought to stick to the issue in front of us and whether or not we're gonna grant the special exception simply to be have, for a tower to be there and for a board, for the little house or the little building that needs to be there. And having said that, I haven't heard any reason not to approve this. It's allowed in the zone. So I'm in favor of this application and I'll cede my, my, my time. But I do want Dean to answer, are we getting off topic by discussing this easement and access?
I think it's important to know that there is an easement and then that's what they intend to use. But yes, there's a question of, is that the appropriate place and environmental issues or site plan in that would be the planning board?
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
But Gail, I would say one thing, if you looked at item G, the appropriateness of it would be entailed. So a lot of that is the location can be discussed as far as that. Would you agree?
No, I agree that we discuss whether or not a particular spot for the tower and for the building that's gonna go next to it, are the location issues in front of this board. As to the specific access to it and the location of any easements that may access it, I believe that's part of site plan review. I firmly believe that we can only discuss what's in front of us. And to go out any further is not within the purview of this board.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion, I, I'm again, not a lawyer, but I'm just trying to keep, keep it to the, to what the facts that we have in front of us and what it is that we are here to decide. And that's simply whether or not this particular spot identified by.
Is appropriate. Is the particular spot per item G proposed location is appropriate for the requested use?
Yes.
That's what we're here to discuss.
Okay, well, we are discussing, and I believe that it is an appropriate location. It's a high spot in an area that has bad cellphone coverage. So that's, that's, that's my feeling on that.
Okay. Mr. Foot, you got any?
Mike? Well, Gail brings up a good point, you know, I have sympathy for the neighbors not wanting the access road between their houses. But really, Gail is correct in saying it really has nothing to do with the application in front of us.
And if they, the provisions of the special exception also provides them with a thirty day grace period that they can, if they so need to, if they disagree with the outcome, one way or the other, they can ask for rehearing and with their rebuttal. So that does give them that ability to do that, so.
Let's explain that to the Butters, please.
So, Roland?
I have just one question. Are we allowed to come short and discuss the height of the tower? The question I have is, when we discuss a new structure, a new building going on, we have to maintain within 35-foot limit. We're talking about a structure which is man-made, which is gonna be 140 feet in the air.
That would be a question to planning.
Communication towers would not fall to 35 foot. I think it's generally recognized that communication towers are going to be various heights. That, again, would be part of the site plan approval. Obviously, they have to be a certain height in order to work, and that is certainly well above 35. That is, that is not part of the application or included with the board at this time.
Okay. Yes, Mike?
In reference to the location of it, it really is up on this one high ridge, which has straight access, and you can't. Hey, you know, it's not taking away any growing area. It's ledge. It's not right out in front of everybody. It is, you know, behind areas of wood. And I do think it's an appropriate use for the Cheney's to be able to use it and gain income from their property.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we grant, do I, I need to do these, I guess, one at a time, correct?
I would suggest that.
Okay, all right. I make a motion that we grant a special exception Z 02020-012. A special exception, this one is for the, I'm sorry, I did the accessory use building. But okay, this is for the accessory use building. The use requested is specifically authorized in chapter, yes, it is. Article 23526 authorizes this use. The requested use will not create undue traffic condition or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It's a non-residential area. There is no pedestrian access to this tower. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage source system or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties. This particular tower isn't gonna create anything, I mean, the building is not gonna have any, any runoff from it at all, stormwater or otherwise. It's a very small building, and I'm sure that the construction people are gonna handle what would happen when it rains. If it ever rains again, I might add. The requested use will not create excessive demand for municipal police, fire, schools, or solid waste. No, won't. Any special provisions for the use, this use is set forth in this chapter are fulfilled. That is true. The requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, not be, nor be detrimental to the use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The accessory building, these are way out of the way of any of the residential properties. It will be fenced in, so it will not create a hazard. It's not visible to any butter from any city, street, or road. The proposed location is appropriate for the requested use, and the requested use is consistent with the intent of the spirit and of this chapter in the master plan. That's true. Exact similar non-residential locations exist in a number of places throughout the city. And this tower is gonna be on a ledge outcropping of land with a high elevation in an area that really has poor cell phone coverage. It'd be a good thing if this addressed that. I also wanna add with both of my motions is that this is also widely governed by federal communications policy and law. And I, I don't know, you know, that that's my, that's my motion to approve the first one, which happens to be the building, because that was first in my hand.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none. Mr. Foot?
I vote to approve.
Mike?
Approve.
Gail?
Approve.
Roland?
Approve.
And Steve, approve. Okay. So can we have a motion for the second?
Yeah, I'll go on.
For the tower.
I'll make a motion to approve 02020-0101, which is the construction of a 140-foot-tall tower on this property, on this location. The, the use is specifically authorized in this chapter. Article 23526 authorizes it. The requested use will not create any undue traffic communication or unduly oppose pedestrian safety. There is no traffic or pedestrians in that area. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or storage system or any other municipal system, nor will there any significant increase in storm run-off onto adjacent properties and streets. It's a metal tower. There's not gonna be any runoff. The requested use will not create excessive demand for municipal police, fire, protection schools, or solid waste services. That's true. Is any special provisions is set forth in this chapter are for bill. That's true. The requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public nor be detrimental to the use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. There already is a tower in the adjacent neighborhood, so it is consistent with other uses within that neighborhood. The proposed location for this is appropriate for the requested one. A tower will be located on a ledge outcropping on land with one of the highest elevations in the city. It is actually a very good location for a tower, especially in this part of the city. And the requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the master plan. That is true. It is also, there are similar taller communications in the tower. They do feed off of one another. So this has a very good chance of improving cell phone communications throughout that area.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mike makes the second discussion. There being none. Mr. Foot?
I vote to approve.
Mike?
Approve the motion.
Gail?
Approve the motion.
Roland?
Approve the motion.
And Steve, approve the motion. All right. Now we move on. Next application is application 105. It's a variance, 401 Lakeside Avenue. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-35A, front setback and 235B, side and rear setback, to allow for the construction of a 12-by-12 deck, 20-by-20 addition, and the reconfiguration of a garage with a bonus reference. Applicant, please come forward.
Mr. Chair, you have a letter in front of you requesting a continuance.
Okay. Let the record indicate, there was a letter he received for a continuance. And how does the board need a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue.
Okay, we have a motion, second.
Second, sir.
We have a second. All those in favor? Let me call the roll, Mike, Mr. Foot.
I vote to.
Continue.
Continue.
Mike?
Approve the motion.
Gail?
Yes.
Roland?
Approve the motion.
And Steve, approve the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. The next meeting is, next, is a variance, 0106 variance. The address is 958 Main Street. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article 7, Section 235-31F, residential accessory use to allow for parking of the motor home and the driveway. If the applicant is available, which I see he's online, and we'll go from there. Please introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help.
Mr. Bernard.
It's not that he's.
There you go.
Am I here?
Yep.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay. Hello, my name is Barry Bernard. I'm the homeowner on 958 North Main Street in La Conia. And I have a motor home that I purchased last year, and my wife and I use it on a regular basis, recreation and getaway, especially in these times. I'm sure you can understand that. But I, I got a letter about a violation, and it's almost specific about storage of recreational vehicles. And this is not a stored recreational vehicle. It's legally registered, inspected, insured. I drive it on a regular basis for personal enjoyment. And I'm retired, and I've gotten all the information from the city about what should be done with it. Park behind your property or garage or whatever. I'm retired. I'm on fixed income. I don't have, first things first, the room on my property to park it behind my, my house, or the financial ability to build a garage to park it. And even if I could build a garage, I would be violating the 10-foot distancing guidelines that the city requires. I don't, the lot is not that big. My parking situation in the front of my house, and I'm sure you're all local people, I've got a fairly wide driveway, and it's, I'm not violating any rules regarding the living in it, using it for what was the other thing? Where was it? I've got more notes here. Notes have to put me either for living, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes. It's a motor home. It's a fairly high-quality motor home. It's, you know, 15, 16 years old. It was a $90,000 bus back in the day. So this is not a piece of crap trailer on the side of the road. We use it on a regular basis, enjoy it, and it's especially important now, where you can't even get a hotel room, to go somewhere and enjoy yourself. So I am asking for the variance because, first things first, what if my pickup truck broke, my wife's car broke, and this was the only vehicle I had that is registered, inspected, and insured, to take me anywhere and do anything? Go buy food or go do whatever, just live life? Am I gonna be penalized having that in my front yard? I just think it's, we need to have a little leeway here, I think, and just looking for a little, I don't know, leeway, that's all.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
I, I got one. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How often does he use this?
Once a month, anyway. At least once a month.
And how long have you had it?
I bought it a year ago May. And the key to buying it was, we were gonna go on, you know, because my wife is still working part-time, and I do too, but we were gonna take off for the winter, do the snowbird thing. But one of our damn cats got sick, so we ended up staying at home for a damn cat. So I, that's another whole story.
It probably is, but, sorry, not one we're interested in.
Not a subject for discussion, believe me, she's in the other room.
Okay.
Her and the cat.
All right.
So.
I guess that answers my question. Thank you.
I don't mean to be rude, I'm just telling the truth.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant? There being none at the moment, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public, our own Zoom meeting, to please, just the public, raise your arm, your hand, and if you're on Zoom, you can push the little hand raise button, and give us a minute to recognize you.
Mr. McManus.
On the line here. You're still muted, Mr. McManus.
Bye-bye now.
I can hear you, and we can see you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for, for having me. I just wanted to make a few.
Your finger frozen.
All frozen.
Oh. Am I frozen?
No, you're good.
Now you're thawed out.
This is awesome.
I'm timed out?
No, you're good.
I'm good?
You can start again. You froze for a moment now.
Okay, okay. Yeah, my name's Paul McManus, and I'm at 950 North Main Street, right next door to Barry Bernard. And, and, you know, he's had this, this motor home there, like, for over a year, year and a half now. And, and I'm his next-door neighbor, and I don't see it as a problem at all. You know, he uses it on a regular basis. He keeps it insured. He keeps it kept up nice. He keeps his property kept up nice. He keeps it clean, takes very good care of all of his things, and he's a great neighbor. And, and I, you know, I have nothing but good to say about this situation. And as I look at this vehicle, I don't consider it to be a problem from my perspective. So I would, I would, I would vote, well, if I had a vote, to say that, that he, he, you know, that it's, it's fine as far as, I guess, my, my particular perspective is concerned. So just wanted to share that with you and, and appreciate your input, so.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else from the public or on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak?
Oh.
Okay. Let the record indicate, everybody who had input, provided input. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the board for further questions.
Of the applicant? No, I have none of the applicant. Are we with the board?
Not yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Foot, any final questions?
Yep.
Mike?
No.
Gail?
No.
And Roland?
Hello, I, I don't have a question or comment.
Okay, just wait. And I don't have any further, sir. Do you have any closing comments?
I appreciate your time and I just want to restate that it's, this is a running, rolling piece of equipment that I enjoy. And I think I need to reiterate the fact that I don't want to throw it on this whole COVID thing we got going on, but this is the only thing we get to do to get out and about. We were actually, last, late last summer, went to Fratello's to get dinner. And we got a takeout and took the bus down to the big parking lot at O's. They weren't open because obviously everything closed. So we're sitting in a parking lot and the police showed up. We're having dinner in a motor home just to get away. And the police show up because someone at O's didn't like the idea of a motor home in their parking lot. But the police were so, I mean, La Conia cops are very cool. And they came up and they came to the door, I opened the door and they saw the Fratello's bag. And the cool thing was, we're just having dinner. Well, it might have been smart to get dinner from O's than Fratello's and park in their parking lot. It was kind of funny. But, that being said, it's just a piece of enjoyment to get out and about, that's all we have. Park it somewhere, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna park it. I heard you guys talking earlier about, in the town, about parking your vehicles and boats and jazz in a hundred-dollar-a-year parking lot. I'm not gonna put a $30,000 bus, you know? I mean, some fool will drive that thing away and live in it for two years before I know it's gone. No, thank you. I need to have it at my house, I have the room, I have the access, I don't use it for anything but traveling. We just go out and about and I, I'm hoping in a couple of months, we're gonna get out of here. As long as that damn cat survives.
Is that it, sir? That it?
Thank you very much, board members.
All right. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Yes.
I just wanted to reiterate the comments on the earlier application that's similar. I know it's a difficult situation. It's especially from the city standpoint, it's, it's difficult when you're in a high visibility situation that, that you're here. You're in a high visitability situation. People drive by, if they see one, then they're gonna be asked to do it on their property because they think it's okay. And that's, you know, the biggest issue we have when we send out the letters of notification is that most people don't even know this ordinance exists. We get that. And it's more of an educational situation than anything else. But we try to treat everybody fairly and on the same standard.
All right, thank you. Gail, you have something to?
Did you say Gail or Roland? Roland also has.
Yep, he'll be next.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question and I want to direct this to Dean or Karen. The Article 235-41L, which is what we are, we are reading, says, "Storage of recreational vehicles, travel trailers, blah, 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 blah." If you look at the one before it, which is K, it says, "Parking and storage of unlicensed vehicles." And that has nothing to do with recreational vehicles. My question to Dean is, can you define the difference between parking and storage?
Parking would be, in this gentleman's situation, if he was to store it someplace else, and he wants to use it for a weekend, he goes and gets it, he brings it to his driveway, he parks it in his driveway so that he can load food and clothes and et cetera, that's parking. But leaving it there for weeks, months, whatever, is storage.
Okay, well, I wanted to make sure we were all talk, all on the same page and talking about the same thing. And I wanted a legal definition of what parking meant as opposed to storage. And from what I'm understanding, Dean, that is the duration of the amount of time that whatever it is, is in the yard. And, and your definition as the planning department, you're saying that the definition of parking is something that is extraordinarily short-term, perhaps overnight, but no longer?
Perhaps, yes.
Unless you're preparing for a trip, true?
Well, that's.
Absolutely, I mean, it's subjective. But, you know, we don't drive by the property, see a trailer or an RV and send out a letter. We go by the property on multiple occasions. And when we observe the same situation, then, you know, it's, to us, it's storage.
Okay, and so what, what you're, what I'm, that's my, that's my thing. So what you're seeing here is a case of storage, not necessarily of parking. Because I want to get to the heart of what the ordinance actually says.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's storage. And the applicant has admitted that this is what he does with the unit when he's not using it. And.
Okay.
He's storing it on his property when he's not using it. And I, and I understand how, I understand his perspective, I get it. But I didn't write the ordinance.
Yeah, no, and that's why I was asking you for your, your technical definition of the difference between parking and storage.
Okay, Roland, you had a question?
Yes, a comment, Mark. I think Dean made a compelling point when he said that there are vehicles all over the city like that. In fact, if you look just about four houses from where this gentleman lives, there's another trailer parked in that yard. And that one's been there long enough to have ladders wrapped around the bottom of the trail. Somebody's been storing that one.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that one too.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. McNair?
Can I ask a question?
No, sir.
I would think that.
Closed all questions from the public.
All right, we are closed, is this the board?
This is the board.
All right. So for an opinion here, I think it would be wrong of us to accept them while denying the previous one from 522, for the same reason that you can imagine, and I understand it being a nice vehicle. But we do have places within our community, secure places, where you can store these things that aren't right out on the main way. Once again, once you let one, it's gonna be another. And just think of summertime up and down the Weir's Boulevard. There's plenty of people who own large touring vehicles. And so I would be inclined to deny this application in fairness.
Mike?
That's, you know, it's not really a hardship to leave it in the front yard. I've seen, I've seen the Winnebago or whatever brand it is, I've seen it several times and they said, "How's he get away with that?" You know, so, you know, it appears he has it even on jack stands to level it off in the driveway. So, I really, I can't approve of it.
Okay. Would you like to entertain the motion, please?
Well, then I'll make a motion, I guess. I'll make a motion to deny the variance because to grant it, it would be contrary in the public interest. The public interest is that we do not want to look at large recreational vehicles that are in recreational areas for, for long-term or even short, long-term use. The spirit of the ordinance and the variance and the substantial justice both go to the same way. This is not allowed in the ordinance. The specific reasons for that is what I'm taking away from our planner. And the substantial justice is that it, it would, neither one of them, it would not, it would not be in the spirit of the ordinance nor it would induce substantial justice. There is no benefit to any, to the city to have recreational vehicles parked prominently in the house. The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Well, I think technically could be. There is a, you know, there is an argument that when you drive down North Main Street and, you know, nobody want, maybe, maybe nobody really wants to buy a piece of property that someone's got, got a recreational vehicle parked in, you know, less than 10 feet or 10 feet away from their property line. That can have a diminishing value on, on the neighboring property. And there is no hardship that the client iterated that I find. He's written on his application that it's reasonable, in this case, I don't think it is reasonable considering that there are other storage locations in the city. I think the one that Mr. Del Vecchio mentioned earlier happens to be at the Belknap Fairgrounds. And that one may not be accessible in the winter. However, there are other places that it can be parked within the city that are accessible should the, should the cust, should, should the applicant want to use it in, in the winter.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion of the motion. And then, Mr. McNair, how do you vote?
In favor of the denial.
Mike?
I approve the denial.
Gail?
Yes to the denial.
Roland?
Yes to the denial.
And Steve?
Yes to the denial.
So, we move on to the last application before us.
Is that that, guys? We're done? Hello?
Yes.
We're done?
We're done. Your application was denied, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, the next application is 0107, variance, 978 Weers Boulevard, number 15. variance application is, applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-358 front set back to allow for the construction of a new side entrance and stairs and the reconstruction, expansion of the existing stairs and landing. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help?
Mr. Schaefer, you're still muted.
Unmuted, how's that?
A lot better, sir.
All right, back in the dead air, okay. Trying to get this going quickly. All right, so I live at the aforementioned residence at 978 Weers Boulevard, number 15. My wife and I purchased this property a few years back and this year we moved here to live there full-time. The, as, as you can tell from the application, the, the stairs that we use to enter the building, it's not your usual building, but we need those stairs to get in, are really decrepit, they need to be replaced. And now that we live here, it's, it's a, something we need to deal with every day. We're here because when we filed for the building permit, we were told that because of the location of the building on the property and the proximity to the property line that we would have to get a variance in order to proceed with the, the construction that we're looking to do. So, but basically, the construction looking to do is, is to, you know, replace what we have on the one side of the building and on the other side, add an entrance to the middle floor. There are three floors here and we don't have an exterior egress from that floor. We feel that this should not be any sort of impact to the surrounding properties or residents. Many of them are seasonal anyway. Due to tree lines and the sighting of this particular location, there's really no one nearby to, to see anything anyway. But I don't think it would look out of character with the other properties along the side of the road in this area anyway. And the, the bottom line though is, we, we have to do this. We cannot continue to use the building, those stairs are going to come down and I have no choice but to rebuild them. So, want to do it the right way, want to get the right permissions, but that's what we're facing. Thank you.
So, I understand the replacement of the original stairs. Can you enlighten me on the proposed new stairs? What are their purpose?
Well, there's, okay, so on the one side of the building, a child, I would say roughly the north side of the building, that's where the existing stairs are. The south side of the building, the reason we're looking at that, to be quite frank, is we had an architect try to design this. We were originally hoping to have the new second floor entrance on the same side as the stairs that are there now. Unfortunately, due to building codes and rise over run on stairs, that sort of thing, there isn't room the way the building is, is built to actually put that entrance there, at least that's what the architect told us. So the only way to get that second floor entrance would be to come around the other side of the building.
And the purpose of that second floor entrance?
Well, the second floor entrance, there's, there's no egress from this, this part. And I should clarify, the top floor, the way this is built, is actually the, the, the main living area. The second floor is, is bedrooms and a, an office area that I use, which is where I'm at right now. And the basement is basically storage and laundry, eating, that sort of thing.
So this is a single-family home? Sir?
Sorry, I missed that.
It's a single-family home?
Yes, it is.
It's not been done to make it into, try to make it into two units?
No, I don't know how you would ever do that here. And that's not something our condo would allow.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? Gail, do you have any questions? All right, with that, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. If you're in the audience, please raise your hand. And if you're on Zoom, just raise your hand, and give us a minute. Let the record indicate, no one from Zoom or from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I bring it back to the board for further questions. Hearing none, I'd like to ask for closing comments from the applicant.
Well, in just in closing, I just was thinking here to maybe clarify a little on that, that second entrance that you had asked about. And we're not spring chickens, as you can see. And having the ability to, if there were some sort of emergency situation where we had to get out, having that second floor entrance would be really helpful in, in, in a, in a safety situation. Our staircase that goes upstairs is actually a spiral staircase. So it's not like you can move things easily up and down that, other than yourself. The stairway to the basement isn't all that wide, so we can't really.
The stairway to the basement isn't all that wide, so we can't really, they need to bring in like a stretcher or something to get me out of bed. I'd struggle to think how they'd have to do that, so.
So if I may, if I may ask a question, then, the, the entrance that you want to rebuild the steps to, is, is that your main entrance to the whole building?
That is correct.
So what you're doing is creating a secondary egress to your building?
You could put it that way, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious, as I look at the setback to zero, I'm looking at this line that's along the Boulevard. I just, zero setback probably is bringing my hell, is that what I'm seeing there on this plot?
I don't think so.
Are you talking about the yellow and the red light?
Correct.
Uh, yellow is the property line. Or in the right of way. And the building is pretty much right out.
So therefore, there is no front of that. That's what they're requesting really from.
So is that fence in the right of way?
Yes, it is.
I see one on my drawing here, which is the secondary door.
That would be the proposed stair and ramp?
And ramp.
All right. There's no further questions. I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Gail, you have any input? You're muted, by the way. We didn't hear you if you said something.
I gotta unmute myself. I apologize. I am fine with this application. I, I don't have any questions or issues that I want to write.
Okay. Mr. Foot?
No, I think I'm good.
Mike?
I'm all right.
Can I get hold? I'd like to entertain the motion, please.
Entertain the motion to that application, Z02020-0107, 978 Weir's Boulevard, tax that only 3248, 15015. Uh, the request here is variance from Article 6, 235-35A. That's correct. Yep. And this is reducing the front setback to zero to be aligned with the existing house until, order to allow the construction of a new side entrance and stairs and the reconstruction expansion of the existing stairs and landing. Changing the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the house has been at this location for since early 1900s. And it's time for the access here to be updated. And to grant it, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the movement of the home, you could imagine, a safety factor would be that too. Substantial justice is, once again, safety and ease of access into the building. Um, variance agreement, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Once again, you're replacing something that's in need of repair or replacement, and so one would imagine that would keep the property values up. And hardship would be just hard. Time wears and certain things we use regularly need to be replaced.
And would one might also say that hardship could be this, is providing a secondary egress to the property where there's currently only one?
Correct. Being that there's only a single egress or egress of the property, this would bring it up to current sound and requirement to allow more than one step further.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mike, second to the motion. Discussion. There being none. Mr. Foot, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of acceptance of this motion.
Mike?
I vote to approve.
Gail?
Yes to the...
Roland?
Roland votes yes, and Steve votes yes. Okay. So that motion passes. All right. So...
Have a great evening.
Everybody got your calendars for the night? For the next year's meetings? We got, looks like, half are meeting on Tuesday and half of them on Monday.
Chairman, I would point out, the last two dates on this calendar will fall on holidays or what, on the other holidays.
That being the 15th and the 20th?
No. The...
The filing deadline, sorry.
So it should be November 24th and December 23rd, the last two.
Plus, November 24th?
Yeah. That would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
And then December 23rd.
The filing deadline.
Yep.
And does that give enough time for legal... With those deadlines?
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else to come before the board?
Uh, no, Mr. Care. I just wanted to know when Dean was planning to address us on the short-term rental. I, I mean, do we still feel that's necessary? Well, I mean, does other members of the board think that's even necessary? Or do you, do we...
I've always liked to have myself discussion over that ordinance, you know, because even as Mike said tonight, the impressions seem to be different among the different board members.
Okay.
So trying to make sure everybody's interpretation of the ordinance is, is what they think it is to what it should be, is, I think, important.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I'll go either way. I just wanted to make sure the other members of the board felt it was, is necessary to do that. And since you do, I'll, I'll go with that and hope Dean can put something together for our next meeting if our agenda is...
Yep, that's what we were hoping for.
And just, just so we don't, I don't know, Dean, did we, did they need a motion to accept the calendar for next year?
No.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody's in favor. Good night.